Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. Before Mayor Parker calls a meeting to order, we ask that you please silence all electronic devices. City Council meetings are conducted for the official business of City Council and to receive input from residents. Members of the public attending City Council meetings shall observe rules of decorum and shall not engage in disorderly conduct. For those of you who have requested to speak, there are two podiums in the chamber. Each podium has a countdown clock located to the speaker's right that will indicate how much time is remaining. A bell will sound when you have 30 seconds left. Before you begin your comments, please state your name.
Good morning, and welcome to your four City Council meeting. I'll call us to order.
Today's invocation will be by Pastor Helen Collin Epps from Morning Star Prayer Center. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledges of allegiance.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. May we bow our heads, please. Gracious Father, we just want to thank you today for your love, for your peace, and for your joy. We want to thank you for this time of gathering in this City Hall. Many come in and many come out, go out. Many come in and many go out. We want to thank you today that we are here. So, Father, I pray a blessing over this council, over our mayor, that this city will be a city that has great wisdom, that this city will be a place where people can come and live and enjoy life. I pray unity and oneness. Today, I pray over these children, Lord, that are in this building. I pray over each one of them. You have not given us a spirit of fear, but power, love, and a sound mind. So, cover our babies. These represent our city and all of our schools. Cover them now, in the name of Jesus. God, we thank you today that every person that comes in and out of here will come in with a peaceful mind and leave out with peaceful thoughts. Just let this council do what they need to do, rule, make decisions for all of the people, so that our city will be a beaconing light around the world. We thank you today for all your blessings, and we give you glory and honor, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next, we will invite Jared Howard II to come forward to sing the Black National Anthem, "Lift Every Voice," and sing in honor of Black History Month. Is Mr. Howard here?
He's not here yet, so...
Okay.
And I don't see Councilmember Nettles jumping up to sing instead, so we're going to keep rolling through, Jeanette. Thank you.
Okay. So, our next special presentation will be recognition of Tommy James for his lifelong commitment to serving Fort Worth's youth.
And Councilmember Beck, this one belongs to you.
I could not think of a more appropriate day to honor Mr. James when the room is filled with children, because we are honoring you today because of your commitment to children. I'm joined here by one of my council members, who was one of those children, as a testament to how long you have been working in the community. I am joined by our very young, spry councilwoman, but there's also some older folks in the room, one of those being my uncle. So, you go all the way back to old guy status, and then all the way into many generations...
George Floyd.
That's right. Many generations here in Fort Worth. So, I like, Jeanette, I think, has an amazing story about her time with you she'd like to share.
Well, it's not that amazing, but, Mr. James, congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. So, you probably didn't know me very well. You know, I wasn't an athlete. I was a hall monitor. I was there for my fourth and fifth grade. And, you know, I did get in trouble once, and you fixed that. You waved that paddle around, and said, "Don't come back." And I didn't. So, thank you for kicking me in line, and congratulations again.
And look how well she turned out. So, all right. Without further ado, Matthew Thomas, Tommy James II. In recognition of his lifelong commitment to serving Fort Worth's youth, the City of Fort Worth proudly recognizes Matthew Thomas, Tommy James II, for his decades-long dedicated service to education, leadership, and community enrichment. Throughout his career with the Fort Worth Independent School District, Mr. James inspired countless students and colleagues as a teacher, principal, substitute teacher, and coach, but above all, as a mentor to hundreds. Mr. James has received numerous accolades, including the Texas PTA State Premier Principal Award, and the Fort Worth ISD Human Relations Committee Award, and multiple recognitions from the Optimist Club, including their Lifetime Achievement Award for Outstanding Youth Work. The decision to name the gymnasium at George C. Clark Elementary in his honor is a testament to his lasting legacy of commitment to youth in our community. Additionally, his work with the Junior Optimists Athletic Programs and his efforts in guiding young athletes to professional achievements in Major League Baseball underscore his remarkable ability to inspire and lead. Fort Worth is a stronger, more vibrant city thanks to individuals like Mr. James, whose lifelong dedication to education and community building has created a positive and enduring legacy. The City of Fort Worth extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to Mr. James for his tireless efforts to uplift and empower youth.
I've never made his feet that short, but I will. I want to introduce Matthew Thomas James III, my son, right here, and Matthew Thomas James IV, right there, my grandson, my wife, who I could not have done any of these accomplishments. Everybody who knows me, you know, you had, must have had somebody smarter than you working with you, behind you, and that was my wife, Judy, who's been with me for 52 years. Never been to a ballgame before she came. She'd never seen a ballgame before she started helping me. She's been to many a ballgame since. And I've got my daughter, Karen, and Karen Moser, and my grandson Tyler Moser, and his father, my great brother-in-law, Nathan Moser.
Son-in-law.
Son-in-law, excuse me. And my, one of my students from my very first year, Robert Francis, is back there. Back in, I had, 1973 was his graduation year, I believe, and that was 1966 is when I started. And I want to thank Stephanie, oh, I left off my beautiful, she's up there. Stephanie, my daughter-in-law, is right there on the camera. And the guys that put this together, that asked me if I'd do a resume, and maybe they were going to do something with Elizabeth Beck being his niece and so forth, was Randall Moore and Jimmy Edmondson. So, Jimmy and Randall, stand up, please, real quick. Thank you. And any of my fellow Optimist members that are here, would y'all please stand up, just real quick, Optimist members, please? Thank you. Thank you. And any of my former students. One of them came in from New Mexico, Robert Ford, and any of my former students, Jimmy's a former student. They're, oh, my goodness, something I hadn't seen in years. You've got the readers that I've got. Oh, I've been so blessed with students that I've taught and coached, and got to know their families, and that's the key, is, is the relationships that you can build with them. And some of them, like Jimmy Edmondson, since fourth grade, I've known him, and he's getting up there in years now. I don't say how old Bobby is, but I know, but anyway, thank you very much, and I'm sure I've left off. I see Roy John Plack, my fraternity brother's back there. And so, there's some people here I haven't seen in a long time. We're going to be, in a little bit, we're leaving to go to Angelo's, and we'll be in the back room. Don't bother anybody or hurt anybody, anything, I think, back there in the back with anybody that can, would come over there. It's great to see your schoolchildren. I probably, I subbed at 30, about 32 elementary schools after I retired, as friends while I subbed, and I've probably been to the schools at North Heimout, I didn't ever go. I went South Heimout, but not North Heimout. But anyway, thank you very much, Elizabeth and Jeanette. It's a pleasure to have you here.
Former students, come on down, real quick, real quick, real quick. Come on.
Roy John, let's go.
Congrats again.
Next, we will invite Jared Howard II to come forth to sing the Black National Anthem, "Lift Every Voice," and sing for Black Heritage Month, History Month.
Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven rings, rings with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the roaring sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun, our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won.
That was fantastic. Thank you so much.
Next will be items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda.
We have none.
Items to be continued or withdrawn by staff.
We've got two items to be continued or withdrawn. We will withdraw MNC 25-0107, and council will be asked to vote the revised MNC 25-0107. We will also withdraw MNC 25-0137. This public hearing is being withdrawn, and we will bring it back at a later date.
Counsel, the next will be consent speakers, and Mayor, I believe we have one.
Adrienne Smith.
Adrienne Smith, District 6. I am one with the people, and the people are the power for change. Mayor and council, communications that I'm speaking on today, for those who have documentation, it'll be on page 10 of 18, number 16 is the item. So, Mayor, we have a $32 million project initiative as it relates to the capital improvement program, something that I signed up to speak and against, as, I spoke, I signed up to speak in opposition of, but the only reason I'm speaking in opposition of it is because I feel like the people of this city deserve to know why this, this project is important, and why you all about to, or getting ready to vote this $32 million initiative in place. Now, I was at the work session last week, and the staff member, Mr. Chris Hatter, if I'm saying his name correctly, he brought a great presentation. Although many of you were there, you all were in your own world, doing other things, but he, he had, he had a great presentation to bring before the people. So, my thing is this, this is an important project, but can the people of this city, not just in work sessions, with things of this magnitude, with this cost, can the people have an opportunity to hear from the staff at a council meeting to explain why we're doing this? It's important, Mayor, because you all continue, you all continue to be wasteful in what you do with our tax dollars. Now, I want everyone to know, we used to be able to speak on these items individually, rather we are four against them. We used to be able to sign up and speak to these items. Now, we have this top-down council and mayor who have condensed this, condensed this into just a, like a fast food drive-through. One vote, with one vote, all of these contracts, all of these initiatives that have millions upon millions of taxpayer dollars attached to them get voted through. And that's a disgrace, Mayor Parker. That's a disgrace. But you all continue to be self-serving, continue to be self-serving, continue to just disregard our livelihoods here. And Mayor, you love to tell how we're growing, and how, how Fort Worth is growing, and how we surpassed Austin, but that doesn't matter, Mayor. You know why? Because until we remove some of you, things won't get better. Thank you.
That's the last of our speakers on the consent agenda. Thank you. Motion, a second, any other discussion? Please vote. Oh, Gina's absent. Thank you. Motion carries.
Next will be speakers on the non-consent items, Mayor, and we have six.
Thank you. Our first speaker will be Megan Lash, followed by Alice Cruz.
Good morning, counsel. Can I have my presentation pulled up before the timer starts? Is that possible?
And make sure the speaker is up on the microphone. It may just be me hard of hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, my name, or good morning, my name is Megan Lash. I'm the president of OSA Industries. I'm a developer that has done quite a bit here in Fort Worth and throughout the state as it relates to affordable housing. I just gave you a handout. What you have in front of you is actually what we did to meet the city's housing policy. The top part is the housing policy requirements. The part below is everything we did above and beyond the city's housing policy. And if you've seen me do work in this community before, you know that we go above and beyond to reach out to folks as much as we possibly can. We sent out over 800 mailers two different times that was not required, held multiple meetings, and we are prepared to continue those meetings if we're able to get a resolution of support today. My project, I'm not going to go deep into detail because I only have two minutes left. And I didn't get to how to move this, if that's... Control? Next slide, there we go. This is a picture of the church that we are trying to preserve and build affordable housing. Part of what I love about working in Fort Worth is these neighborhoods have soul. They have character, and they have buildings like this that we're able to keep and find a new purpose for them when they're not able to keep with their current purpose. While it seems like going neutral today won't matter in the long run, something has to be done to this building, and it will hurt the community if it's not. Dilapidated buildings that can hurt, can hurt the value of the surrounding property and become health hazards. This building has stood in this, in this property, in this neighborhood for over a century, and we are standing here with a financing tool, doing exactly what the ULI study just said is needed in this community, which is affordable housing, stabilization, and help, you know, keep some of the character of the community with all the redevelopment pressures around it. This is the number-one scoring application in the region, and it is for multiple reasons. This is your chance to support an affordable housing project that is able to keep part of the fabric of the community still there. So, my, the, any resolution other than support would dock our development by three points and would make it virtually impossible to move forward. So, we do have to go through a zoning case if we were to move forward. The, the time is not over. If you approve it today, it does not mean that this development is the final chance. So, thank you.
Sorry. I know the answer to this, but I think it's helpful. I know that y'all have listened to some neighbors, and there was some consideration for focus on senior housing. Explain why that's not something you're currently focused on your applications. My understanding, you really don't receive as many points in the application process. Is that correct?
So, in this particular case, we could have made the election for senior, but very early on in the process, in just, not early on, but in December, we had to make that election. And so, we had a, a meeting with some of the neighborhood officers, and we asked, sorry, we asked the question, and the, the response was, well, you know, we're, family, a family development would be able to serve more. So, after the, the state's deadline of January 7th, I cannot change that designation.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't own this property. I have it under contract. I don't know that it will be available next year. I don't even know that the state's rules would allow me to come back, you know, and be in this position to get it funded next year. So, it's, to, to say wait and return as a senior development is, is like rolling your dice.
Thank you for that, thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it. Okay. Our next speaker after Megan is, I had my paper, and I just lost it, just a second. There we go. Alice Cruz, followed by Adrienne Smith.
Hi, Alice Cruz. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to have more time to meet with the neighbors. We've had, I think, three more neighborhood meetings since the last time we were on the agenda, so that was really great to get all their feedback. Also, we've got some new council members since we've had a lot of our developments come online. We currently have four here in Fort Worth, and all of them have added to the tax rules. One of them was Seattle Place, that you saw in the pictures in Megan's presentation. That was an existing church, not on the tax rules, brought the entire thing onto the tax rules. We, all four of our properties pay taxes. So, just wanted to kind of give that distinction, if that's a factor at all, that we do try to be a good neighbor, be conscientious of the tax base. Several of our other properties were vacant land, and so, they really weren't generating, although they were on the tax rules, weren't generating a lot. So, we're just eager for the opportunity to pursue our application for the financing, and we'll work to do the design through zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adrienne Smith, followed by Bethany Bryan.
So, again, to the people who have the mayor and council's communication documentation in hand, page 16 of 18, item number three. This is MMC, MNC 25-041, 0443. This speaks to a settlement amount in the total, this speaks to a settlement, settlement amount of $650,000. Now, this, this money's not going out. Kudos. You all finally are now paying out or receiving something back through court litigation. So, let me bring everybody up to speed on what's going on. So, we have what they call the new City Hall, which is the old Pier 1 building, big tall building that sits west of here. And it has cost, we, the taxpayers, a whole lot of money. But this lawsuit, this $650,000 lawsuit, it is being paid out by Blue Skies Surveying and Mapping Corporation, and David, what's his name, Petrie? So, they were blamed, they had been blamed for the debacle that has been with the new City Hall. Mayor Parker, I'm glad you are smiling. The new Fort Worth City Hall, the original purchase of this particular building was Now, the build-out project, including the purchase, was estimated at $190 million, up to $195 million. The new work project costs, you know, with the things that you all still have going on there, is estimated at $139,276,188. Now, let's do the math. We'll crunch the numbers. $69 million purchase, we had included some of the federal offer funds into this project, That's taxpayer money. So, we get to our final cost, total cost to the taxpayers, $334,276,188 for the new City Hall. It was purchased for $69 million, Mayor. Take away this $650,000 settlement that you all are due to receive in, it leaves us at Nothing to pat yourselves on the back for. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bethany Bryan, followed by Reggie Jennings.
My name is Bethany Bryan. I live in the North Side neighborhood. I've lived there for several years. I'm fortunate to live in a place rich in history that feels safe and is community-oriented. The North Side neighborhood is a special place to live in, and as the surrounding parts of the city grow, it's crucial to protect, protect North Side's history and take care of our community here. That is why I'm speaking in support of this resolution and moving forward with the development of Irma Park. This project plays a role in preserving the century-old church that currently stands, and in maintaining the entire neighborhood's historic value, and investing in its residents through taxes and community engagement. Instead of a near future where the church is demolished and new development comes in with little save from the community, this development will, will be housing built with purpose for the community and with neighborhood collaboration. As someone who's worked in homeless services in Fort Worth for several years, I have a strong understanding of the issues that cause poverty and housing insecurity in our city. I've spent years working directly with those who experience and are at risk of homelessness, and those who are doing all they can to provide a safe and secure home for themselves and their families. With the current economic challenges many face in Fort Worth, affordable housing options are crucial. While I recognize that some may have concerns about affordable housing, I believe that this project will be a benefit for North Side. This development can provide a more stable housing option for those already living and working in the area, as well as invest in our schools through increased enrollment and onsite after-school programming. I'm very familiar with Sagebrook's other Fort Worth properties, both in terms of the quality of their buildings and their reputation among residents in nearby communities. The success of their other properties gives me confidence that this project will be executed with respect for the community and consideration for the safety of the neighborhood. I live just a few blocks from this development site, and I'm in full support of the project moving forward, and I urge you to vote in support of this resolution and the many benefits this development can bring to the North Side neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Reggie Jennings, followed by Alyssa Banta.
Good morning, everybody. Mayor, City Council, Reggie Jennings. I'm going to finish reading the latter part of Megan's speech, I'm with the developer of Irma Park. We still have a zoning case to work through on the site. A decision of support doesn't make this project a done deal.
And I urge you to vote in support of this resolution and the many benefits this development can bring to the North Side neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Reggie Jennings, followed by Alyssa Banta.
Good morning, everybody. Mayor, City Council, Reggie Jennings. I'm going to finish reading the latter part of Megan's speech with the developer of Irma Park. We still have a zoning case to work through on the site. A decision of support doesn't make this project a done deal. This vote is a piece of paper for the finance application, which allows us to keep going and keep working. So while at the neighborhood meeting last night, the typical scare tags were deployed, talking about crime, traffic, and how low to moderate income, people are bad, and this time even children were mentioned in that regard. There were brand-new people there last night that hadn't participated before, and there were people missing that have gotten comfortable with the project through all the meetings. Our plea today is to let us keep working. I know, I know you know by the work that has been done in this city that we won't let you all down. And just also to reemphasize that, these are two separate occasions. This is voting for the finance application. The zoning will happen at a later date. So we thank you all for your consideration and your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alyssa Banta.
Hattie, good morning. So I'm a native of Fort Worth. I came here in 1968, a couple months old. After being born in San Antonio, I live on the east side, but I own property off of Magnolia, off of the red bricks of Camp Bowie and off of North Side Drive. I'm amazed at the boom, and like many in Fort Worth, exhausted with the apartment complexes sprouting up absolutely everywhere. New-build apartments everywhere is not healthy growth. It's actually awful in a lot of ways. The church at Circle Park, a campus that spans the block and is 2.7 acres, is for sale for $5.5 million. The congregation, smaller than it once was, MLB relocating someplace else. This property will sell. Who will it sell to, and what will happen to it, is the question. It could go several ways. First, being sold to a church and kept as a church, which doesn't seem likely. It could be sold as a single-family development who would divide the property, knock down the building, and build 14 homes there. The cost of just the dirt at $5.5 million would make each lot over nearly $400,000, just for the lot. So that doesn't seem likely. It could be a charter school or an event center, but is anyone willing to come forward and rehab the building? I'm on the Board of Historic Fort Worth. This building dates from the early 1900s. I think there's another option. Allow a developer to nationally and locally designate the building as historic, protect it, preserve it, and allow it to be repurposed. I've got my notes on little tiny cards here. Fort Worth should take the long view. How do we keep Fort Worth looking like Fort Worth, keep our historic buildings, and grow? Do we rehabilitating our buildings and preventing them from being torn down is great, is a great option. The project at Irma Park that they're proposing seems to fit the bill. It preserves the look of Fort Worth. It takes care of the North Side. If it sells on the free market, it's going to end up being 200 units, apartments there. Let's try to, it's a hard line to straddle. Taking care of what's there, looking forward all at the same time, and having a long view of how this is going to be 50 years down the road might be the way to go. Thank you so much.
Counsel, that's the conclusion of our non-consent agenda items speakers.
Our next item will be changes in memberships on boards and commissions, with the first one being 254842, board appointments from District 2.
Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I request your consideration to approve and appoint the following individual to the board below with a partial term effective February 25th, 2025, and ending October 1st, 2026. And that would be Chris Campbell for a partial term to Library Advisory Board representing District 2. The respective application, resume, or attached original copy will be maintained with the City Secretary's office.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Counsel. Any other discussion? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be 25-4943, board appointments from District 4.
Councilmember Larsdorf.
Partial terms effective as of February 25th, 2025, and expiring on October 1st, 2026. Tyson W. Thompson, partial term Park and Recreation Advisory Board, and Jonathan Ty Lambeth, partial term Plan Commission and Capital Improvement Plan Advisory Committee for Transportation Impact Fees. The respective applications and resumes are attached, and the original copies will be maintained in the City Secretary's office.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Counsel. Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is 25-4946.
Entertain a motion, Counsel. Councilmember Larsdorf, Councilmember Blaylock. Motion and a second, Counsel. Any other discussion? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is 25-4547.
Counsel, any other discussion? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is 25-4948.
Motion and a second, Counsel. Any other discussion? Please vote. Try again, Charlie. Thank you. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0162 with report by city staff Michael Henick.
AKA Robert Sterns.
Yes, while Michael and I both have beers, I am not him today.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Robert Sterns, Economic Development. We are here today to hold a public hearing regarding the proposal to adopt an ordinance to dissolve tax increment reinvestment zone number six, also known as TER6. TER6 was created in 2002 to promote the development of north downtown, primarily near the former Radio Shack campus. All the property within the Riverfront Tiff is currently occupied by Tarrant County College and other exempt usage, which means its tax-exempt status has eliminated any tax increment that might otherwise go to the Tiff. The zone is scheduled to expire at the end of 2036, but all Tiff-supported projects have been fully funded and no projects are presently anticipated for the district. Therefore, early termination of the zone is recommended. In compliance with state law, this hearing provides an opportunity for the public to address the proposed dissolution of TER6 and its board. Following receipt of any public comments, staff recommends closing the public hearing and approving MNC 25-0162 and the ordinance to terminate the zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Councilmember Beck, any questions for Robert? Thank you. Motion and a second, Counsel. Please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0107 revised.
Councilmember Nettles? Or somebody? Okay. So I think this one, which councilmember wants to go first? If Councilmember Flores or Williams, if y'all had revisions to how this was going to move forward. Go ahead, Carlos. Go ahead. I can't hit it either. She wanted to borrow a microphone.
Okay, thanks. Okay, there it is. All right. First, before I give my motion, I want to state, you know, for the record, that a developer's outreach was insufficient prior to the application date. And for MNC 25-0107 revised, I move to approve MNC 25-0107 revised with the following change. Remove references to Irma Park, meaning that the development will not receive a resolution of support.
So I understand it, Leanne, the MNC is 25-0107, providing resolutions of support to Avenue at Lancaster, Highline at Everman, Highline at Reisinger, and Pioneer Crossing, but would not include Irma Park. Is that correct? Okay. Any other discussion among councilmembers before we proceed? I've got a motion on the floor. Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Go ahead, Councilmember Nettles. Oh, Jared, go ahead.
I would like to provide a substitute motion to approve MNC 25-0107 as-is.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second on the alternative motion on the floor. So if to vote on the alternative motion first, substitute motion, it'd be a substitute motion for what Carlos Flores revised revision. So if you need clarification, that would include MNC 25-0107 and all five resolutions as-is that are in your current packet. So in order to vote on that first, I need an alternative motion on the floor. So we need to change the motion was currently by Councilmember Nettles and seconded by Councilmember Beck. We're going to vote on that motion first. Chris, and then to Beck is second, and then Councilmember Williams, please, before we vote. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to give some comments regarding the project on Risinger Road. You know, I think that, you know, one, I don't support this project, but I understand the limitations of the policy as we have it. Requires a letter of support for those who successfully apply, meeting all the requirements of applications. So while I support, while I'll be voting yes to support a letter of support, I do not support this project and will be the loudest voice against it when it comes to zoning. Just kind of stepping back for a second. I think it's also important when we talk about affordable housing to talk about it within the context of the affordability crisis. And housing is one component of that, fair living wages is another, and being able to have assets is a second. And when we look at folks like my family growing up and growing up in poverty, the most important thing to liberating those who are oppressed is actually giving them a tool to be set free. And I want to challenge the state of Texas and also this body. We've done an excellent job at reimagining what does it look like to create economic opportunity and mobility for families facing injustice and hard time? I mean, it looks like a community land trust where we're subsidizing ownership so that families and seniors can live with dignity in a high-quality home and have an asset that then they can pass on to the next generation to break the cycle of poverty. I mean, so while supporting affordable housing for rent is needed and it makes our hearts feel warmed, it's not enough. It's not enough to barely make ends meet with the subsidized rent. It's not enough to not make a living wage. It's not enough to not have assets to be able to pass on to your next generation, your kids, your grandkids. I mean, so until that justice is realized, it's, we can't wrestle our laurels about doing one thing. I know this is a nuanced conversation, and when it's a both-and conversation. And so that's something that I think is really important context. Back to Risinger Road. I think that this corner at Risinger and McCart is a very important one to our neighbors. It's a corner that has long needed commercial development, has not seen much commercial development. The city has made significant investments on this corner with the library, with the new police station, and the other corner, we have a childcare center. But beyond that, we don't have neighborhood commercial to support the neighborhood. And ultimately, commercial, as well as all of the things we're discussing today in this conversation, makes a strong and vibrant neighborhood. And so with that, when the time comes for zoning, I will be the loudest voice, and I won't be alone. My neighbors will be with me, and I can assure you that this won't pass on.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
I just wanted to share that there is a senior housing project in District 11. I have received some calls and emails about, for those that are for or against, and we have seen large petitions for others in other districts. But I do want to assure my constituents, District 11, this is one that will go through zoning. So please reach out, please show up when that time comes.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for clarification. I think I know the answer, but just for the audience's sake. Avenue at Lancaster, D11, will need a zoning change. Is that correct? Anybody want to take that question for me? Sorry, Casey, to put you on the spot there, and you're in the middle of the row. And I'm actually just going to ask that you provide clarification on the record for each of these five resolutions before us. The first is Avenue at Lancaster in District 11. Casey?
So Avenue at Lancaster, it is currently zoned to family, and it would be proposed to be changed to planned development.
Thank you. Highline at Everman, D8, does it need a zoning change?
It would. It is currently neighborhood commercial, and it would be proposed to be changed to planned development.
Thank you. Highline at Reisinger, D6?
It is, also requires rezoning. It's neighborhood commercial, and it would be changed to planned development.
Thank you. And Pioneer, Irma Park at D2?
It is currently zoned, community facilities, and it is proposed to be changed to planned development.
Thank you. And last one is Pioneer Crossing in District 8.
It is currently zoned, high-density, multifamily, and doesn't require rezoning.
Doesn't require, okay. And Councilmember Nettles, it's my understanding you're supportive of the project and wouldn't, okay, thank you. That's helpful. Thank you, Casey. Counsel, we do have an alternative motion on the floor by Councilmember Nettles and Councilmember Beck. And here are my comments about this. And this may throw my councilmembers for a loop, but I think they've all done a good job articulating their positions. The most powerful tool we have in some of these cases is zoning. And we really can't help that the application process is due before the zoning process, which I know is difficult for the applicant at times. My councilmembers have very clearly articulated their concerns with these various projects, where they're going to be on zoning when it comes up. I will support my councilmembers on those zoning cases, to be clear. So if and when in D2, or D8, or D11, the councilmember doesn't like where it's headed, or D6, and, thank you, Jared, I'm on the record to say I will support my councilmember in that zoning case. Today, though, I'm going to support these resolutions as proposed by staff because I think we have a housing policy in place. And it is really difficult to be a developer in this space right now when it comes to affordable housing. There's a lot of things going in Austin that we're watching closely. I may not take this position today if we didn't have a zoning tool that's coming up. And I appreciate the position of my councilmembers, but because of that, I'm going to support the current motion on the floor by Councilmember Nettles, supported by Councilmember Beck. Is there any other discussion on the floor? If not, you can vote. Thank you. Motion fails. So we're going to go back to the original motion, which is an amended motion currently on the floor. If I understand it, it's, all the resolutions are in place, but it's removing support from Irma Park in D2. Motion on the floor by Councilmember Flores. I can't remember who seconded it. Macy, Councilmember Hill, thank you. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next will be MNC 25-0143.
Got a motion and a second? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is MNC 25-0180.
Got a motion, Councilmember Flores?
Move to approve.
Motion and a second? Please vote. Motion carries.
Mayor, I believe that concludes all of the action items.
Thank you. Counsel, we're going to close today's meeting for two very important reasons, and I'm glad our kiddos are here today from our various schools. The first is to mark the end of a monumental chapter for our city. Our city, our longest-serving city manager, David Cook, is retiring from the city of Fort Worth. And today, we're closing the meeting in part in David's name, who joined us at his final city council meeting in his city manager capacity. Undoubtedly, as a city, we today are, because of his leadership and individuals like David, he's led this organization with tenacity and grace through the over 10 years, through monumental change, wrangling many different opinions on this dais and the personalities of the city council, always focused on getting us to the right policy direction. It is no easy job, but David has done so in incredible fashion. I know that we all feel an immense sense of gratitude and warmth for this community. In the last week, we celebrated his many contributions. I think there's another party again Wednesday night to celebrate him. And we're all excited that his next chapter will also still be here in the city of Fort Worth. So Godspeed to David. Thank you very much, and we wish you very, very much success in your next endeavor. And second is an important closure today for a giant in our community, Judge Clifford Davis. And you're going to see us jump from this dais and immediately head to his funeral upon adjournment. We're closing today's meeting in honoring the life of a pillar, Judge Clifford Davis, who passed away on February 15th at the age of 100 years old, kids. Judge Davis lived a life marked by unwavering dedication to service. He lived through pivotal moments in our nation's history and played a key role in advancing civil rights, especially in North Texas, where his efforts were instrumental in ending segregation in schools as the first African-American judge to preside over a district court in Tarrant County. He broke barriers and paved the way for countless others. His legal work and civic contributions opened doors for many, and his commitment to helping local students pursue higher education local students pursue higher education and offering pro bono services set an inspiring example of public service. Judge Davis was a transformative force in Fort Worth and throughout North Texas, leaving a world and this place better than he found it. We extend our deepest condolences to his daughters, Avis and Karen, as well to his colleagues and friends during this very difficult time. God bless Judge Davis for a life well-lived. Thank you, counsel, and meeting is adjourned.